Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our September 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. This meeting is occurring at our beautiful Town Hall on the second floor meeting room. If you are watching from home and you want to participate, you can do that by using the Zoom link in the notes, or you can drive on down to Town Hall. I'll remind everyone this meeting is being recorded, as always. And I think that's all we really legally have to say. So now that we've got that out of the way, thank you all for coming, and if someone wants to lead us, we can open with a pledge.
Our fundamental allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, and as always, we'll open the meeting with any public comment. If you're here for a specific agenda topic and want to talk on that during one of the public hearings, save that for the public hearing, please, but any other public comment at this time?
There's a hand raised on Zoom.
Ah.
But Logan's missing.
Let's, you know what? Think we know Zoom enough, we can. If you don't, I can go, I can unmute them. Okay, it looks like, Ms. Fortune, you're unmuted, it looks like, please.
Your front door is locked and no one can get in.
It's blocked. We have, I think that's why Logan went downstairs to check on it. Thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
Understandably, keys to the public buildings are not freely available, but that means that if something's locked where it shouldn't, gets a little trickier. Oh, there we go. Great. Okay, any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, we can go on to Chair and Director's Report. And my friends here in town, wow, does it make me happy after close to a year to introduce you to our new Land Use Director, Christopher Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, how are you?
And if you have anything you want to share with them or with us, just start, great. If not, we can go on, I don't know where we are there.
I'd just like to say, I'm really excited about working for the town of Lunenburg. I have a lot of experience and I think it'll be well-applied here. Everybody's been great. Logan's been awesome in my office, helping me get up to speed. Been there so much, people think I'm living in the building, but I look forward to really being committed to the town and your priorities and the priorities of the board. So I'm ready to get to work. And through you to the rest of the board, what I plan to do, if it's your pleasure, is every meeting and prior to the meeting with the packet submission with your advanced materials, give you a Director's Report. This would just be sort of a broad brush report on the land use landscape in town. Things going on that aren't necessarily specific to the agenda. And we'd post that online as well, so the public could see it and know what was going on in our office as well. So with that, I'll hand it over and excited to be here and welcome to you all.
Great, thank you. And Chris, I'll let you know that we run a, at times, a less formal ship here. So by all means, if you have something to say, let us know so we can hear from you, because you are the man we're paying, because you're the expert. And we're just elected officials, so.
Thank you.
Please. Oh, if you're gonna, I do need to ask you to speak into the microphone, if you're gonna. Yes. If that, yep. If that's going to be a problem coming up and you expect to speak, just kind of wave at me and now and let me know, and we can get a microphone ready so they can come out if you're in a situation that coming up to speak a lot is going to be an issue. TV does have some.
John Brush, 100 Royal Fern. A number of months ago, I participated in a information gathering about the master plan that's being developed for the town. Since then, I've heard nothing. If we can get some input or where does that all stand? And have we finished with input, or how is that all going?
There is one additional survey coming out. There's been some issues with getting meetings for the Master Plan Steering Committee. So there is a final survey coming out. I think it should be next month.
Sure, I have links I can send out shortly to start distributing via Facebook and everything.
Mr. Chair, through you to the board, I have an update. Spoken with the consultant.
Yeah.
Who's doing the project for the town, and we're going to set up a meeting for next week to get everything back on track and get rolling. So we'll have information on the town website as well, keep you updated. But it's gearing back up now that I'm on board.
Yep, so to lay it out a little bit more, summer was anticipated to be a slow time, especially given that the Master Plan Steering Committee is intentionally, by the design of this board, much larger than town committees tend to be. Town committees are often five, seven people. This one's 15. And the reason that was done was we picked many groups in town to be represented to make sure that they would have voices at the table. During the summer, during vacation season, it gets harder for people to line up. We're six-ish months from wrapping. There's going to be another public info gathering session where they share out some results and most likely the exact format is being finalized, but share out some results, gather more feedback again, along with a survey before that. And then, once we have that data, if you've been to multiple of these sessions, you may have seen that it began very broad, got a little more narrow, and a little more narrow. So as we get that feedback, the contractors we've hired can kind of take that feedback and develop questions and ways of gathering data to refine what they're learning from the town to get a more crisp, more clear picture of what the public's looking for in the master plan. And so the summer's a slow time, we're going to see it picking back up.
Understandable, yeah.
Yeah, everything is on schedule as expected. But we probably could have communicated better about knowing the summer was likely going to be a dip in activity.
Okay, then when would be our next update for getting some kind of information?
I intend to put out the survey link this coming week, if all's going according to plan.
Okay.
And then we will put out a date for the meeting. I don't have the tentative handy right in front of me. But as we see, if we get, if we're getting enough response on that survey, then the meeting will be a little sooner. And all that info will continue to be put out at planlunenburg.org. And we may also update the town website, but planlunenburg.org is where the, again, the people we're paying to help us out with this have the rights to update, and that's where you can go just to find the planning info without having to sift through other aspects of town government.
Okay, great, I just wanted an update, appreciate it.
And thank you for the question. It's exciting, master plan is reaching those final phases, and that's going to be nice, because then we get to take that, we get to move to implementation, right? We get to take that, here's what the people of the town have said, and we can use that as a pattern from which to try to craft bylaws and everything else that best meet the needs of the town and move us in that direction. Okay. I am going to move us on to public hearings. We've got two warrant articles, and the first one is the Water Supply Protection District. So we have now, this is, we've had public meetings about this, where we've invited everyone to speak. This is a public hearing, which is a necessary step in the, in getting things on the, on the warrant for town meeting and getting them voted on at town meeting. Amanda, are you free to read for us?
Thinking about loading right now.
Thinking about loading, that's always dangerous with a computer.
Okay, got it, thank you. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing in person and via Zoom on Monday, September 23rd, 2024, at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To make alterations to the code of the town of Lunenburg, Chapter 250, Zoning, Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 4.9, Water Supply Protection District, by adding provisions including clarified definitions, expanded prohibited uses, and a section specifying uses and activities requiring a special permit, which includes construction of new treatment works and related structures within Zone 1. The complete text of the proposed amendments is available for public viewing at the Planning Office at 960 Massachusetts Avenue and at the Town Clerk's Office at 17 Main Street in Lunenburg.
Great. And I need a quick refresher, because I know we need to solicit public comment. Are there any other steps besides soliciting public comment and presumably like voting in favor of sending, do we vote in favor to send to the warrant? Okay.
Mr. Chair, yeah.
Okay, well, also, vote about sending to the warrant. I say vote in favor, but that's often because that's the way motions get worded. Okay, great, I will start by turning to the board, and then I will open for public comment. We've already done a lot of hashing out here, and the intent is for this to be less hash-outy than we've had so far. Because we've done a lot, hash-out, you're going to get the words you get from me, okay? There's sometimes English, I can't promise better. But that's what we'll do and hopefully be all set. But I want to turn to the board first and offer us the chance to discuss or think out loud or anything else before I invite public comment.
Not really. I think from the last public meeting we had on it, I think we came to a pretty good spot on what the public wanted and what we were putting in there. But we'll see now, I guess.
Fair.
I agree.
You actually, I do want to take a moment, because I haven't done it during one of these sessions directly. I want to explicitly thank the board for taking the time with this. I thank the public, but multiple times, for coming and attending. I want to thank the board as well, because it takes more time to hear people out and try to find the best compromises we can in this kind of environment. So thank you for your patience in something hopefully we can all be proud of, but we'll see. All right, without further comment from the board, I would look for public comment. Again, I do not believe this is going to be a heavily debate-driven, but I do want to get your public comments and make sure they're on record, and we'll go from there. So just give me a wave or something, please.
Thank you, John Fortune, 50 Hemlock Drive. I had sent an email last night asking for an updated zone map. I'm hoping, and I can read what I sent, if that makes sense for the public, or.
That would be, reading for the record, that would be great.
All right, perfect. So it was to the board, hi, thank you for your work and compromise on the Water Supply Protection District. During the last open meeting before your board vote, we talked a lot about swimming in Zone 1, which we eventually approved. During that discussion, Chairperson Brenner told us Zone 1 is effectively, effectively ends at the water's edge. Therefore, adding swimming into Zone 1 approved activities wasn't really necessary. Although I don't question Chairperson Brenner's knowledge, I have not been able to find anything that, that documents that indeed Zone 1 does end at the water's edge. So one way to solve this issue for Hickory Hills residents is to simply redraw the zone maps so that Zone 1 is ended at the water's edge. And this would reaffirm the discussion that we had last meeting and clearly show that Zone 1 ends at the water's edge and can have no effect on the lake. And I go on to just say that I plan to come here tonight. So that's what I'm asking for today, is that, one, there is a map, I know there has been a map in the past, and that it is drawn to show the discussion which we had that says effectively Zone 1 ends at the water's edge. Okay?
If the board doesn't mind, I can give an answer to this that kind of lays out how we got to that and why I wish I could give you a slightly better answer for look exactly here. And why I think where we are is a good place to be in the end. So the map update comes directly from DEP. This is not something that we have crafted, it isn't something that communities typically alter. DEP says, here's the new map, and you use DEP's data. Different people choose to represent information in different ways, and not every group always presents things that are the best for your average consumer of that data to easily get. And I don't even, if that sounds like a slash at DEP, I really am not trying to wind about slash at them, I just mean that as a fact. So the DEP map, seemingly here, and I believe other places, but definitely for what they gave us, always shows Zone 1 that way. In doing research and talking to people at DEP, Richard Harris, our previous interim Land Use Director, got the clarification that Zone 1 ends at water's edge despite what the map shows. Now, what we don't have, I can't tell you exactly what he was citing when he got that info from them, because there's a lot going on, and the guy that knows his stuff and you're paying money to says this is here, and he's verified it, he can point to where he verified it, great, move on. Because of that, I get the reasoning behind, personally, this is not me speaking for the board, this is speaking for me. I get the reasoning behind including the swimming and everything, as much as I'm going to say it's not needed. I'm saying that from a technical understanding level. I understand as well why residents would want to keep that language there, because it certainly feels less clear-cut. And if you can't find that info easily, I don't think that, I think it is worth, personally, I think it's worthwhile to have that language that preserves. To my understanding, that language does nothing. But the good thing about language that does nothing is it does nothing. Like, it doesn't, if, if we're wrong and, and you need to protect Zone 1 for recreational use, that's happened now. If everything we have is correct, then we're still saying you can do it, and it doesn't matter either way. So that's kind, that's what I can give you. I don't know if you happen to be highly knowledgeable off the top of your head about the way that DEP is defining Zone 1.
No, that, that's consistent with everything I've
Okay.
seen before, and I've worked on several of these zoning amendments.
Would I be able to just briefly mention that? I believe that in.
If you have info, please, please, yeah, say you can check with the chair, but share.
So for the purposes of the bylaw, the rewritten one, I believe it makes direct reference to a specific map that it took a bit of effort to find. But that map is what's used to define the zones for our purposes. And I can, I can make that available if anyone would be interested in that. It is Lunenburg Water District Aquifer Protection Zones from July 2021.
So that is the same map we've looked at before that has the, you know, the bullseye, right? You've got the wellhead and then
Corner of its circle, yep.
Circle around it. Because that's the info, we kind of have to work with what DEP gives us. And so that's the way they're choosing to represent it. But we did include that language at your request, and again, I get it for that reason.
Okay, so is there, so the second question is, do we know anywhere that it is documented that it says that indeed versus a person, person versus a person saying it, there's a document that says Zone 1 effectively ends at the water's edge? Do we?
I can't cite you that off the top of my head. Richard had that info.
Okay.
I don't have it handy, I apologize.
Yep, okay, and I wasn't necessarily expecting, I just thought it might be referenced somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I would suggest that it's probably in the Massachusetts Drinking Water Regulations 310, CMR 22.00.
I appreciate that, I've looked there, I have not seen.
Okay, please.
Barbara Turkington, 110 Royal Fern Drive. I'm wondering, in concert with what Mr. Fortune just said, would it be possible in the document to make a notation that, of that statement, Zone 1 ends at the water's edge? Because looking at the map, that tells something very different. And for the voters to look at that map and not hear the notation would be concerning. So I'm suggesting if we could make a notation in the document, that would be helpful in allowing us to understand that Zone 1 really does end at the water's edge.
I can answer why it's written the way it is now. Other thoughts on that I would, I would leave out to the board. But right now, everything that is defined by people who aren't Lunenburg, things like Zone 1, like what Zone 1 is, what Zone 2 is, how these are figured. What we've done in the past that messes you up is you, you copy the text from the state and you put it in. Because that means your bylaw starts failing the moment the state changes its regulations. So instead, with anything like that, we point to the regulations the state is theoretically using. Adding additional notes gets us back to the point that the bylaw starts to break down when regulations change. And so that's why in more recent years, we've been writing bylaws very specifically, oh, we're not defining this, we're just saying, look here for the definition, because if the state changes definition, it changes for us anyway, whether we like it or not. I, I could turn to the board and see if they have other thoughts on it, but I could answer why we ended up there, initially at least. I don't know if there's other thoughts, but I want to.
I mean, I, we've gone through the process of defining what is acceptable on the water in Zone 1. If we're just going by the map that we've been given, like, we're still covering all of the bases, regardless on if we're delineating at shoreline or at targeted, like, on the map circle. Yeah, I'm just not sure what changes in terms of adding that notation or not.
If I may comment? I think it does clarify to those who have not been in attendance to these meetings and had these discussions, when you bring it to the town meeting to be voted on, I think we want it as absolutely clear as possible, and I'm offering a method to do that.
At the same time, sorry, I think what I was trying to get to is we've defined what people can do on the water in Zone 1. If we then also say, but none of this affects the water, we've now got a bunch of extra language in there that is going to further confuse the topic of, don't worry, the water's not Zone 1, except you can also swim in Zone 1 in the water. Like, there's, there's either, we add that text and remove everything we have on the water, or we go with the safe measure of saying, if it's in Zone 1, you can do all these things regardless of. The maps are marked with that circle. That's what people are going to look at and recognize as what Zone 1 is.
As well, as the one who will presumably, we haven't discussed as a board who's going to be presenting. I presented our things recently, assuming it's me, or I'm helping write it. It is my explicit intent to lay this out quickly for the people in town. Here, like, one of those, here's how they define Zone 1 with a picture. Here's how they, and I can try to find the exact wording for, here's how they define Zone 1 otherwise. Here's the language we're including to make sure you're covered either way. So that no matter how someone wants to read this, you're right to use the water within 400 feet of a public wellhead. Or, again, 400 is a paraphrasing, because it depends in theory how much water could be drawn from the well. But within 400 feet of a public wellhead, you can do these on the water regardless. So we did build that protection in with the, at the, at the, at the behest of multiple townspeople.
Right, I do understand that hasn't really assuaged my concern, because you may not be here for the next 35 years to back up the comment that's made at the town meeting. I don't want to beat it to death, just wanted to throw that out there.
All right, thank you. Other public comment?
My name is Dave Rogers, I live at 82 Highland Street, and I wonder if it would be possible for you or whomever to give us a brief roadmap as to how we got here this evening to, to discuss this, this issue. And after that, I've, I've got a couple of questions.
I'm happy to give that roadmap, others could as well, I'm not looking to trample. And we have friends from the Water District here as well. I would encourage you to flag me down if I, if or when I misspeak, please. I'm not going to speak the exact years on this one and exactly which town meeting it was, I don't have that off the top of my head. A few years ago, Water District, I believe it was the Water District, put forward the 2001 map update from DEP. Two, thank you. It was Point 02021. And giving my interpretation of it, there were multiple townspeople who expressed concern about what this map update meant. And so the map update was voted down at town meeting. Since then, beginning with Adam Burney, our previous full-time land use director, he drafted, the board reviewed, and he went to the Water District, and there was back and forths. A bylaw that was designed to incorporate the new map and also update our water supply protections. Because our current water supply protections are over 30 years old, and if we update to the current technology, there were also some definition issues and everything else. Again, because 30 years ago, we just weren't. else. Again, because 30 years ago, we just weren't as good, most, very few places were as good about writing bylaws that could stand the test of time in terms of how they reference things. But in addition to that, there was an opportunity to give land rights, land use rights back to landowners. Because your options for engineering and mitigation for basic, this whole bylaw is about, is like a lot of planning law bylaws and everything right now. You don't want water on the soil, you want it in the soil. Water on top of the ground, bad. Water in the ground, good. Oversimplified, but maybe not too much. And so a lot of stuff that comes before planning has to do with infiltration, getting water into the ground where it's supposed to be. And because the technologies advanced, we could say, it used to be, oh, Zone Two, sorry, you can never have more than 15% impervious. No more than 15% of your land can stop rainwater from getting into the soil. Now, we've got a lot more engineering approaches and technology that allow us to say, actually, you can cover, you can make more area impervious if you're then doing other steps, things like rain gardens, infiltration basins, to get the water into the soil. So, along that, along with some other updates, has become a bylaw that's gone through a few iterations before the townspeople, either at town meeting or just here at the planning board, to try to best meet everyone's needs. And we see through this process that there are conflicting views on how to best do that. And so that gets us to this process now, where rather than making decisions than having a public hearing, we tried to invite the Water District and the public into an open forum discussion to try to help the board identify what those concerns were, what could possibly best meet those divergent needs. And I'm under the impression, no one's perfectly happy with it. Some people say that's a sign of a good bylaw. Some people say that's not, that's your own call. But that's what gets us to where we are now.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's very helpful. One clarification, this change was not developed by the planning board or the Lunenburg Water District, was it?
I need you to define develop, I'm not trying to play a fast game here. I want to make sure I answer the question correctly.
Changing things, making a, a new submission.
So, real talk, planning board rarely, in, in many municipalities, ours included, it's rare for the planning board to sit down and write, pen to paper, the exact bylaw. So it is the planning board has done it in that the professional we have hired, has been a couple of different professionals, the professional we have hired who is, who knows the, the best way in theory to write bylaws, who knows some of the nuances, who knows the intricacies and what's going to be looked out for by other entities, drafts it, brings it to us, and then there's multiple back and forths. We go, what about this? How about this? And sometimes it's great, and sometimes it's, I can do that, but the board should understand that also means whatever. So this is written by the planning board as much as most any bylaw is ever written by the planning board, meaning it's been written by our paid representative within town government who's an expert, and then we have reviewed it to see if we're best meeting the needs of the town.
Suffice it to say, am I correct when I say that this whole thing was brought forth by a group of people down at the Woodlands, and it's gone through the procedure?
I don't know, I don't know what the, are we, what is the Woodlands? I actually just don't, maybe I shouldn't have.
That's, that's where the pumping station is.
Okay, okay, great. I just don't, I don't know it by that name. No, it was not. This was not brought, to my knowledge, this was not drafted and brought forward by, I assume you mean by the Hickory Hills Association?
Yes.
Yeah, was not drafted and brought forward by the Hickory Hills Association. It was, the original edition of this was drafted by Adam Burney using some recommended language from the DEP, some other, planning is easily 80% thievery. You look at what other communities have done, what works, you take bits and pieces, you put it together, and then you add the twists that are appropriate for your community. That's what happened here. There's then been back and forth with members of the public, with the Water District, and with, in addition to Adam Burney, once he left with Richard Harris, our interim as well, who has some further edits that in his experience, he felt best clarified things.
The, it's my understanding that some folks brought forth a recommended change, and that's how this whole thing started, okay? And it has developed over time to where it is right now, by people making suggestions, et cetera, et cetera. The problem I have, simply stated, is that rather than a very direct approach, it's more geared to a special permit. Is that correct?
Mr. Rogers, again, do you mean a special interest, or I, special permits are part of this in, in one way, and I know that is one of the more controversial topics between some of the interests.
That's why I'm bringing it, yeah.
Could you give me your question again? Because I want to make sure we answer it correctly.
Sure. The changes that have been suggested deal with changing words, verbiage, and intent by the submission that we will be giving to the town meeting.
I, this, sorry, just my understanding, basically you're saying that we had our town meetings, people came here and made their suggestions on how we should be improving or changing this?
No.
Okay. Then I didn't quite understand your question.
It's my understanding that this was, was all brought together by, by the good folks at the, the Woodlands.
No, that is not what happened.
Okay, what happened?
Again, so what happened was, paraphrasing, Water District proposes a map, gets shot down at town meeting due to concerns. Adam Burney, our land use director at the time, said, you know, I think we can take DEP's recommended language, not just do the map, do the map, but also improve the bylaw to modern standards. The board said, okay, he put it together, we looked at it. And since then, there have been many back and forth and iterations. But no, the gross majority of this text has nothing to do with any of that, with the points that people are finding controversial. The gross majority says, hey, if you're in Zone Two, you can actually use more of your land the way you want. If you have, under our current bylaw, if you're in Zone Two, you can't keep salt for your driveway. You can't. You're not allowed to. No salt storage, period. And people are going to say, well, that shouldn't apply to the bucket of salt I have for my driveway. You're right. That's not what the bylaw says. It's 30 years old, plus it says no salt storage. I have trouble believing that literally no resident in this town in Zone Two doesn't have a bucket of salt for their driveway, that they're allowed to use, they just can't store. So they could drive out of Zone Two, pick some up, bring to their property, and salt the driveway. I mean, so there's a lot, this is mostly, the gross majority are updates like that that bring things in compliance. Now, through all of this, there have been people who feel, we've heard the most, from people who worry they will be the most impacted by changes, because that's the way laws work. And, and some of them, mainly some of our friends from Hickory Hills, because they've got a wellhead right there they're concerned about, have had concerns about how that area will be treated, and how that will be handled when there needs to be construction there, or if they're allowed to use the area around it for boating and swimming like they have for a very long time. Most of the bylaw is not that. Most of this bylaw is about improving the, improving what people can do with their land while giving equal or better protections to our groundwater supply. There is a disagreement between, and again, anyone can tell me out there that I'm speaking incorrectly because I'm kind of representing what other people say. I feel that I've heard a disagreement between the Water District and the concerned citizens about specifically whether, it's boiled down to whether or not water treatment system, water treatment plants should be built by a special permit or by site plan approval, which have different voting standards, both in terms of the level of majority needed, as well as what the planning board takes into account.
Therein lies my concern, because I think it just exacerbates the situation. It makes it more difficult for the Lunenburg Water District to, to find a new site and to develop it. And it opens up the countless number of doors that you can walk through to, to exercise, if, if I can use that word, the Lunenburg Water District to, to make it more difficult for them to provide new opportunities for water. And I take exception to that because not only is it going to be elongated, but it's also going to be more costly. And I, I don't understand, well, I do understand, you know, the, the good folks at the Woodlands, if, if we said as a community or as the Water District, you know, we'll, we'll just tear this building down and, and we won't ever do anything here, this whole thing will go away. So, and I'm, I'm not here to, to exercise this, this whole, whole thing and, and go over it point by point again, but that's the crux of it. So it's, it, it doesn't help. It certainly doesn't help because DEP is involved in a whole bunch of other regulatory people. So there's sufficient checks and balances. All it does is slow it down and make it more difficult and more costly for the Lunenburg Water District to provide water for the town.
If-
Sorry?
If you can convince the, the, so to speak, Woodlands group of that, then that's fine. Otherwise, this is going to get shot down again. Like, we made that concession at the previous town meeting because we cannot get this passed without their support. It's, it's been shot down repeatedly for similar reasons.
But that doesn't make it right necessarily, in my opinion. And, and I'm not here to debate, you know, the pros and cons of this. You've allowed me to speak and to, to, to get a, a rough idea for the people at home, what has happened, how this progressed, and, and the issue that we will face if it passes. And I hope it doesn't pass. It's like you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Good evening. Matthew Woodward, 64 Arbor Street. Everyone knows me as Woody. I am Commissioner on the Little Water District. Obviously, we have talked about this quite a bit. And I put a lot of thought into it myself, and, and I understand the, the possibly the two sides of this, this proposal, it benefits or doesn't benefit the town. And as Mr. Rogers says, in, as we go through this, I really hope that we vote on the merits of what is actually going on, not just because we think it'll pass, or won't pass, or whatever. And this is kind of where I've gone back and forth with this. And, you know, obviously me as, as a, as a resident and as a water commissioner, I mean, I look to our future and realize that we, we have some, some hurdles coming up in, in the water department to supply clean water for Lunenburg. We have treatment plants, we have mandates by the DEP. There's a lot of work to be done in the next five years even. By adding this extra step of a special permit, it really kind of hurts the efforts that we're going to be needing to make in the future. So I understand what the bill is, but once again, I, I hope that we look at it as what is really best for the community, and not just compromising one way or another. Look at it, what will this really do for us? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Andy Starasky, 8 Winter Green Court. Clarification, are we debating what's in the bill, or, because there's responses that we could make to that, or it's in the bill, or what's going to go before town meeting, correct?
I mean, it is public comment. You are welcome to say what you want.
I just don't want to drag the conversation on where we've already been, so I just wanted clarification.
So, I mean, you are wel, as a member of the public, you are welcome to say what you wish. I wanted to set expectations early on that whereas prior meetings, there was a lot, it was probably easy to get used to me seeing here saying, what do you think? What do you think? Can we come to an agreement? How about this? You're not going to see that same level from me tonight. I'm never going to not try to find an agreement.
Certainly, and I'm trying to respect that, sir.
Yeah.
So given that, as you know, the community's come forward asking for that special permit as an additional protection that the planning board would hold, not the people would hold, but you would, because we are concerned about an industrial complex being developed and built in the middle of a residential community on a lake. And that's simply what we're asking for. And that lies with the planning board to have that special permit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And there's no one in the wait, in the Zoom waiting room?
Nope, no hands up.
Great, all right. I'm going to turn to the board for discussion. If, if there's wording we want, we feel is inappropriate, we can certainly do that, but I'm looking to the board for discussion as well. I have some thoughts, but I speak a lot because of this role. So I'm happy to hear from other members of the board and their thoughts.
Excuse me. Honestly, I haven't really, I stopped looking at all the revisions because they just went back and forth. But it looks like it's been reworded such that it's not going to be a special on-the-floor change if it comes to it. It looks like, and maybe it was this way before, but it just looks a little different.
I don't know-
The difference between special permit and what was-
Site plan review.
Site plan review. I mean, wasn't it very simply a change of word before, and now it's been reworded such that it's got a whole heading on its own?
I don't recall if it was phrased differently. We changed a big phrase. I don't remember how that worked in the editing process over time.
What, what you're looking at in front of you right now is what came out of the, like, last series of public meetings that we had on this. They, they weren't the public hearings, but they're the sort of- They, they weren't the public hearings, but they're the sort of informalized ones that Mr. Brenner was referring to. This is what Richard drafted out of that for submission to the Select Board on the 16th.
Thank you. You know, I think I'll put all my cards on the table and make everyone mad tonight. When in doubt, I feel like people might like me too much. Let's just, let's get it all out there. Um, and you're thinking, I don't like you one bit at this point, fella. And that, good. Um, not really. I feel bad. I like this version. if I'm just going to speak real frank and maybe more plainly than a, a public official is supposed to, I don't know. If I were talked to at a public meeting the way I have seen members of the public spoken to at some of the cited public meetings, I would want a, a middle group to help out. Um, I get that. I get that need. I really do. I try very hard to enforce a level of respect in this room that maybe isn't always universal for every member of every group. I don't know. That said, I think the special permit changes very little. As I, I've been here before saying personally, I would be comfortable with just site plan review. I get there's people who aren't, and I also get why. With all the hurdles that have to go on from building a treatment plant before it gets to this room, I have trouble believing that any issues that come before us are not going to be hashed out by and large before it ever came to this board. Because citizens vote on what they care about. It'd be great. It would be wonderful. I wish everyone in town showed up to every town meeting and voted. That'd be a horrible logistical nightmare, and I would be thrilled because we'd have New England democracy operating at its best level. But we don't have that. The people who show up are those who are most, who care the most. Often. Paraphrasing. People are going to say, I do care, but I can't show up. Uh, I, general. They are the legislature. The legislature, it's whoever, this town is whoever shows up at town meeting. And as much as I want to say, oh, we should draft, because I got the, I get that ideal, we should draft what's right, what is objectively correct. The objective correct in democracy is what, whatever the voting body is decides. Right or wrong, that, that's kind of the way our system works. But I have trouble believing the special permit is really going to make a big difference in practice. I think it does give some final leverage for, come on, we really need some more noise canceling. We need some more trees screening or something. Vegetative screening. But I think that this process, normally, I would say this behooves the Water District to, and those impacted, to play ball together ahead of time. But to create something, they kind of have to play ball together anyway to get to the point it would get before us for the number of votes that have to occur for budget and everything else. Now, that said, want to point out, if you don't want this to be special permit, you got it. Easy path forward. Easy to execute, well, easy to do, not necessarily, easy to be victorious. You do, you, you put out a floor amendment at town meeting. You put out a floor amendment that has the right wording involved. I, I can't tell you exactly what that is off the top of my head. That says, hey, this should be a, this shouldn't be a special permit. This should be site plan review. And zoning has to pass at, by two-thirds majority at town meeting. Special amend, uh, uh, sorry. Amendments have to pass by two-thirds of majority at town meeting. So if you're someone saying, but I really think special permit is wrong, you can put out an amendment at town meeting and see if it passes. And drum up, I mean, don't just put it out and see. Drum up your support. Get that amendment out and see. And if two-thirds of the people support it, then two-thirds of the people are probably also going to support the bylaw that way. If you can't get two-thirds support, you're not going to get the two-thirds either way. Like, you're not going to get, you wouldn't have the two-thirds on that end. So there's a strategy there. If you're really sure the right path is by site plan review, there's a path forward. It requires some more footwork before town meeting if we go with this wording as is. Theoretically doable. Doable in practice. I'm not going to begin guessing who can drum up who to get to go to town meeting and what people who aren't in this room are going to vote. But we have a system in place to find the thing that the most people want. And either way, what that buys us is some good protection. I don't think the odds are great of getting a two-thirds majority myself, but I could be very wrong. And I've been wrong once or twice in my life. A lot. But there's a path forward that way. So like I said, no one's going to like that answer because it kind of is difficult for everybody. But that's the way the system in town works for most any zoning bylaw. Other thoughts from the board? All right. With no other, uh, discussion from the board, public has spoken. I think we're in a position to vote. What's the motion we need on this?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Right. We do have to.
Motion to make a, usually you make the motion a favorable.
Yeah. So if the board wished to pass it on, it would be a motion to approve the listed warrant article?
Favorably recommend the warrant article for the Protection District.
Okay.
To town meeting.
Okay. If we're done with all this, we can, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Public hearing is closed. Any final deliberation? No. All right. Again, if, if you are, if you're interested in the planning board giving our thumbs up to this, would be a motion to favorably recommend, uh, the Water Supply Protection District revisions.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. There we go. Thank you all. Uh, if you are here for other business, please feel free to stay. If you're only here for Water Supply Protection District, done. That, that ship has sailed.
Until town meeting.
Well, until town meeting. If we're lucky, Dix, if the frost holds off, Dix will still have tomatoes to throw at me at town meeting. So pick them up. They're going to be real ripe.
Good job.
Thank you.
Missed three in the back.
Yep. Can I get a quick, uh, just wave your hands in the air or use the hand raise feature on Zoom if you are here explicitly for the accessory dwelling unit revisions warrant article? Because if you're not, I'm going to move us on to the site plan approval first and then come back to that. Because if no one's here for that, I'm not going to waste more time. We have no hands up?
Nope.
Great. I'm going to switch the order on those to help our friends who are here for site plan approval for 1335 Mass Ave. Change of use. And I see you're getting set up. Sorry about springing on you that second. I just realized we could get you out of here.
I got it. It's loading. Maybe. There we go. Site plan approval. Okay. Uh, the Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September 23rd at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street in Lunenburg, Mass, to hear and review an application for site plan approval pursuant to 250-8.46 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg as amended at the 2016, sorry, the May 7th, 2016 Annual Town Meeting, Arts 37 and 40 by Dale Erskine for a change of use to a retail establishment as well as any use allowed by right as noted within 250-4.1. Subject property information, the location is 1335 Mass Ave. Assessor's map parcel number is 062-0005-00. Owner is Dale and Jerry Erskine at 1331 Massachusetts Ave. Materials are viewable at the planning office at 960 Mass Ave in Lunenburg.
All righty. For the record, Chris Anderson with Hannigan Engineering here in behalf of Dale Erskine for the site plan approval to re, for a change in use at an existing structure. Currently, the property does contain a, just slightly over 1,500 square foot structure. Uh, this structure has been utilized in many forms and fashion over the years as a various retail or entertainment facility. As of, up until recently, it was utilized as a puppet theater, uh, which is no longer being used anymore. Uh, so, uh, right now, the building is effectively vacant. Uh, there is an established parking lot and access drive off of Mass Ave, uh, which does lead its way into, um, 18 existing parking spaces. But what we're here for tonight is to allow for the change in use from the entertainment aspect of everything to a retail establishment at this point in time uh, so that, uh, the landowner, Dale Erskine, uh, can utilize the property to its fullest extent. In addition to that, uh, we have found over the last couple of months is that, um, the ability to turn around a use within this property is very, uh, difficult with the restrictions that, um, anytime it's a change in use, we have to come back before the board. Um, we understand the, uh, concern that the board has. Uh, there's a lot of aspects that do go into the site plan approval process when a use is changed from, uh, one thing to another. But we feel that based on this overall size of the structure being, you know, just over 1,500 square feet, there's not much, uh, impact that will happen from point, from one use to another. Primarily, right off the bat, what we think of automatically is traffic. That's always usually the biggest thing that comes up with, uh, site plan approvals. Um, but the fact that it's a relatively small structure in comparison to other potentially, uh, structures in the area, we feel that, um, any kind of change in traffic from this site is going to be de minimis at best. Um, and the fact that it's an established site that's been in use for many, many years, feel that it's more apt to go that route. With that being said, we did request a couple of waivers for the site plan approval process primarily because it's an existing structure with no proposed exterior or external changes to the site minus the use category. With that being said, if there's any questions from the board, I'll be more happy to answer them.
Okay. Could we go over the requested, uh, waivers from the site plan process, please?
Does anybody want paper copies of the narrative?
I, I would find that helpful tonight. Yes, please. Thank you.
Uh, so we'll just go right down the line here. A waiver is requested from Section 3.7 of the Site Plan Approval Regulations, uh, which is specific to review by a consultant. As we're not changing anything external to the property, um, we feel that it's not necessary to incur any additional costs. Um, Section 4.1.1.2, uh, the datum shall be on the Massachusetts State Plane and, uh, North, uh, North American Datum 1983 with units in U.S. survey feet. Uh, the property right now is on a presumed datum. Um, and we're not showing anything on a, um, on the horizontal or the vertical datum because again, nothing's changing on the site. Um, if there's any questions for relative datums, I know that's kind of a weird term that gets thrown around every so often, but if there's any questions from the board or clarification, I can give you a, a quick Spark Notes version of it. We'll be also requesting a, um, Section 4.1.1.1.9, existing and proposed structures on site within 200 feet of the property. Um, we are showing approximate locations of the immediately adjacent structures. Um, but again, because we're not incurring any additional construction of any structures, if you will, that would impose another, uh, sightly appearance to the property, we're requesting a waiver from that aspect. Um, Section F10 of the Section 4, uh, driveways and driveway openings within 300 feet of the property. Now, we are showing them in the general existing area within the project, but since we're not changing the driveway entryways or anything like that, uh, we're requesting a waiver from showing everything else as they interact with one another. Uh, Section 4.1.1.1.16, existing significant trees on the property. Uh, we're not proposing to clear anything on the property. It's a very well-established landscape lawn area, um, with various trees and landscape beds. So we're not proposing any significant changes to that. So we're requesting a waiver from that aspect. Uh, Section F20, data regarding the traffic safety and capacity issues, uh, for the area. Um, again, we're requesting a waiver for the traffic study and the impacts relative to that. As I discussed earlier, it's a moderately small site with very little traffic fluctuation. And as another note, if we were to do a traffic study on this property, uh, the small size and scale of the existing structure would render the traffic study almost mute because we don't, the sample sizes for the manuals that we utilize for that practice presume much larger structures. So it would be a very skewed number if we were to do that. But, um, based on the available uses within the districts, the fluctuation from one to another is almost de minimis. Uh, Section F22, a photometric map, uh, of the property. Uh, requesting waiver to this. Again, uh, it's not the intent to add any more additional lighting besides what's already there. Uh, so we're requesting a waiver from that aspect. Uh, Section F23, architectural renderings and elevations. Um, as I stated earlier, it's the intent to maintain the structure as is. So we're not going to be changing anything external to the structure. And a, Section F, apologize, F25, or sorry, H4, Section 4.1.1.1, the impact report. Again, uh, based on the general change in use criteria, uh, we're not really changing anything outside of the property. Uh, so we request a waiver for the impact report as well.
Great. Thank you. I have faith in y'all's ability to interrupt, but I just want to make sure, do we have any questions about, right now, about the waivers requested or anything else? Okay. Questions from the board in general about the site plan review that, uh, sorry, site plan approval? I know they're different, even, and we only have one. About the site plan approval really focused on getting that change in use. Thoughts? Chris, have you had, do you prefer Chris or Mr. Riley?
Chris is fine.
Okay. Chris, is there, when you were reviewing this, is there anything that came up that you thought should be brought to the board's attention?
Not really, other than the waiver requests do seem reasonable. This is sort of a benign change to the site. It is captured by our regulations, and change of use should be captured by site plan review. But for this case, I would say, you know, they're using the existing condition unless there was some inherent flaw or obvious detrimental impact from the prior use, a puppet theater that people are aware of. Transitioning to retail, I would expect, particularly in the area of traffic, that that impact would be reduced. With puppet theater, obviously, you have large surges of people coming in and going out when the performance is over. Here, it would be, I think, you know, more benign and, you know, not as impactful to the site. So, I would say what they're proposing should be approved by the board. I don't see any major conditions that should be considered, and that would be my input on it at this time.
I will say, I think this stands as an example of what the Economic Development Committee has brought up to us about here's a bit, a, a commercial space, 1,500, like, almost by the book, right, commercial space right around 1,500 square feet. There's a whole lot in our bylaws that seem to make those more slushable, and maybe there's something we can do about streamlining that process in the long run. But for today, we have the bylaws we have. If there is no further discussion, I would look for a motion. Oh, we have to close.
Public comment?
Oh. Public comment at a public hearing. My God. Haven't we had enough public comment? No. Please, don't let the joke dissuade you.
I didn't see the plans, I'm just curious. We're not doing any plantings at all?
Nothing, nothing else additional as the site stands. The site's going to stay.
Oh, but could you give us the formal introduction for the record?
So, I'm Dan Proctor, 1529 Mass Ave. My wife Jean. Obviously, we live on Mass Ave, but we have the building next to the Erskines project, so I was just curious if there's going to be any plantings and some of the voids between the mature trees or not. That was really my only question. Totally different subject, but someday when I have a minute, I'll talk to you about what the Economic Development Committee has really, 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 really done because there's other people besides this board that hinder commercial development in the town of Lunenburg. So, I have a total difference opinion of that process that you said. That being said, everybody knows the history of what I went through when I developed my property. Ugly is probably not really the best adjective to use, but I'm not a hypocrite. Okay? It's commercial property. They've owned it for a long time. I have no problem with what they want to do. Thank you.
Mr. Proctor, if you do ever want to meet with me, just drop me an email. By all means, please.
Just one information, if I may, Mr. Chair, for you of the board. You know, additional vegetative screening and landscaping's great, usually, but if there's an established buffer, you want to be mindful that that introduction of new plantings may impact the health and vitality of the existing buffer. So, sometimes you have to be a little more reserved in that way.
Mr. Proctor, please.
Can I just make a comment on that? I understand what you're saying, but that's not what happened on my development. In other words, I was planting small trees amongst big ones. I had to take big ones down to plant small ones, so I understand what you're saying. I 100% agree with what you're saying, but this is the problem with different people sitting in your seat. Okay? Because that's not what I had to do a year ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, any other public comment? No hands?
Nope.
Yep. I see four things at the top. Is that everyone that we have?
Yes.
Oh, cool. So, I can just look up there. All right. Four, I see four things at the top. I'm talking about the boxes in Zoom for those who are watching at home and not in the room because that's a horribly nondescript phrase. All right. With, do we have any questions from the board?
Just through the chair, real quick. So, I think the best way to also help with the board's, hopefully favorable decision, just anything by rights as dictated in the table of uses as amended. That way, if something does change, we don't have to come back before you, but that would be the only thing. Obviously, leave it to the board, but.
I need more words describing what you just said to me to make sure I understand it.
So, part of our request was anything that was allowed by right within the districts as amended.
Okay.
That's all we would request.
Let me, I'm wrapping my mind. So, I'm, you're asking for a change of use to retail?
Primarily retail at this point, but in tandem, allowed uses by right within the districts.
So, I, have we done that before? Because.
That's my recollection.
That's.
If it's an allowed by right use, it's permitted regardless of.
Correct. But we're just trying to streamline the process in the future. So, for example, if the gift shop does really well and moves on to a bigger facility, the retail component moves on to a different facility, they don't have to come back to the board, say if they want to switch it back to a puppet theater again, stuff like that.
But that would also let them turn it into a restaurant, for example. Would it not?
It would.
Without coming back for site plan approval?
That would be allowed by the bylaws.
That's why, I just want, I don't think we've handled anything by saying, or anything else, that's okay. So, that's where I get uncomfy?
Yep.
I think they'd take a use variance, actually, so I don't know if that exceeds the authority within the site plan review.
There are no.
To give a blanket.
There are no use variances in Lunenburg.
Yeah, so.
I think Massachusetts, isn't that correct?
Yeah. So, a town could expressly allow them, but.
So, for example, through the chair, I have the list of the table of uses here. Other such uses could include a, an auction house, for example.
Well, give me what I'm not going to like. Don't give me, don't give me the easy ones. Come on.
A liquor store?
There we go. Now, those have other.
Offices are allowed, retail establishments, there is restaurants allowed by rights, other service establishments. Stuff that are not allowed with it by right include auto repair, auto sales, facilities like that, self-storage, shopping centers, adult uses, stuff like that. So, what we're really looking for is trying to streamline the process in the future so that there's no significant hurdles in getting another tenant into that building in a quick manner, just because of the nature of the economy.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
Just briefly, he could give you maybe a handful of likely uses that they may transition to if that were to happen?
Yep.
And you could include that in your approval? I don't know if you could go beyond that.
Okay. I would, I turn to the board. I cannot think in my tenure on the board where we've done more than one. It sounds like there's a version where we're allowed to. I don't, while I'm all for, I'm definitely in favor of trying to find some better flexibility in the bylaws. I will admit myself, I'm a little, I'm significantly less certain about embedding that flexibility into a site plan approval ahead of time. Now, let's think, if it was a change, well, no, that'd be internal for the most part.
Retail's pretty broad.
It is. But, I turn to the board. What are our thoughts? Do we, how do we feel about, or any other acceptable use, or a handful of acceptable uses?
I'm personally not in favor, favor of it.
Yeah. I mean, it seems to go beyond the scope where anyone that read this saw the notice for retail establishment, you know? It kind of, it kind of limits my thought process on it, you know, like, I certainly am not opposed to something like a restaurant, stuff like that, but it just seems like it goes well beyond the scope of anybody that may have read this for, you know, but yeah, another problem with retail.
I agree. I think, you know, we mentioned a handful of uses. I think I'd be more comfortable with that if they were within the same area. Retail's kind of broad, but I'm not sure, you know, transitioning from retail to restaurant, although it is by right in that location, I think the parking might change, and there's certain things that might change that would, I wouldn't be comfortable with being like, well, you could do retail, you could do a restaurant, you could do.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't have something in place to verify as a board that way. It could be picked up by some other avenues in theory. Yeah, I don't think I'm comfortable with more than one use. I do think this is a very illustrative example of how we can and should look at improving some of the bylaws because I think there are plenty of slushable uses here, and I don't, as much as I agree with the concept, we don't have that baked into our bylaws yet, and I follow rules, myself. That is not to imply y'all are not following rules. That isn't what I meant. I mean, I tend to be a stickler for, as a government official, doing what the paper says. All right.
I've come up with another, well, another question.
Mr. Allison, I'm going to, my, my bad ear is really bad today, so if you could be a little louder, please.
I've come up with another question.
Okay.
Yeah? So, it looks like there's two parcels with the same street address?
So, there's the 1331 and 1335 are the two par, or, there's a common ownership between the two parcels with different processes to allow for access and parking on the property. So, 1335 is the structure that we're currently looking at now to convert to a retail establishment. 1331 is a residential structure located behind that structure, if you will.
But part of the parking for the retail is on the residential, and the residential gains its access and frontage, well, not frontage, but access.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And so, I mean, are you asking for retail for the entire lot or just?
Just the 1335 structure.
Which is the previously mentioned .92 acres. I was looking at this, I'm like, there's no way this is only less than an acre.
Yep.
But that makes more sense. So, what is the street number for the resident?
1331.
31, okay. Thank you. Also, just to bolster what we've already talked about, and we seem to be in agreement upon not being in favor of it, they're asking for nine waivers. The nine waivers, they might be applicable to retail, but if they decided to go with some other allowable use, they might not be as appropriate in our mind?
I agree, myself. So, I'm going to turn to the applicant. I'm going to say, I mean, I can't speak for the board. The board, members of the board have spoken. What do you, I mean, first, I'll ask, do we have the option with what they've requested of only approving for retail? Or do we have to kind of all or nothing what their request is?
Well, I'll give you the definition of retail establishment from the zoning bylaws. It says, "Sale or rental with incidental service of commonly used goods or merchandise for personal or household use, but excludes those classified more specifically by definition." It would be anywhere else in the definition, so that does limit it quite a bit. I would say you're looking at the retail request here.
So, I guess my question is, since their request was, I'm going to call it retail with slush, is can we approve only retail? Or can we, or we, if we don't want to approve retail with slush, are we in the position we have to deny the request if we don't want retail with slush?
Well, you would deny what they're requesting.
Yeah.
So, I think.
I don't think you'd deny the retail part of it.
We withdraw the other rights by use, other uses by right, and exclusively ask the board to act upon the retail component of it.
If the applicant gave you specific uses that they might want to change the use to, that would be very helpful for you to make a determination about whether you could do it.
So, they could. I get the, my impression from hearing members of the board speak was they may also not be in favor of that, but I could be wrong. So, I'm going to turn to you as the applicant and say, how do you want to handle this? If you want to go back and kebabs, that's okay.
One more.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Dale Erskine, owner. My husband's over there, Jerry. What we're just trying to avoid is doing this whole thing again, like, say, the gift shop doesn't work out, this lovely woman over there that wants to rent it as a gift shop, so I'm going to rent to her. What if in a year it doesn't, you know, work? Can it be an office building? Do I have to go through this whole, you know, site plan? Again, you know, it's a lot.
And I guess the hard answer is, by law, right now in town, yeah. There's interest in town in changing that because in a faster-moving economy, there's more pivoting going on than there used to be.
Right. I've had interest in like a restaurant. I mean, I've had a lot of interest, but I'd have to say, no, no, no. I mean, you get these engineered plans, they're like $5,000, you know? Hello?
I can't speak for the board, I will speak for myself. I am certainly sympathetic. I don't disagree. We do not, in my opinion, we do not have the legal ability within town right now to handle that transition. Now, I think it's quite possible, it could be possible as early as spring town meeting. But within a year, I think it's possible we could have a bylaw together that makes that work better, and maybe, if that's what the board decides they want.
Right.
I also want to point out, there's a lot of interest in this in town, and the planning board doesn't have to be the one who puts forward bylaws. Townspeople can put forward bylaws, and there's processes for that, and there's times that townspeople have come forward and said, hey, planning board, we're really interested in X. Here's some basic ideas and wording, could you help us? And there's times we've been interested in working with them. I'm just putting it out there because there's limited time-energy focus for a group, and I know there's other people who are very passionate about this, so it may be possible to put together a group who comes forward with a bylaw saying.
Well, like that economic development, you know.
The EDC has expressed some desire.
There's so many little commercial buildings that aren't occupied because they can't do this.
Again, for me, you'll hear, I'm sympathetic, but we don't have the bylaw flexibility to do that in a way that kind of ensures everything goes correctly afterwards. We've been charged with the town by watching over all things like change of use, and without the town voicing its opinion and saying, no, it's cool, you don't have to check for change of use like this, we do what the town has already voiced, and they've said, I mean, you could say, they didn't do it intentionally, maybe, maybe not, but that's what they voted on. And so, you have a board that's looking to stay in line with that, it sounds like.
So, any change of use, we still have to come through this as of, even though it's in the group of things you can do with your property and commercial property in that zone.
Because they have different requirements, and we have to make sure that those requirements are met.
All right. And are you the only, you're the board that does that as far as meeting the requirements? Or is that how that?
Essentially, yes.
The new land use guy, is he going to be able to help with the new, you know, changes and stuff? Or, I mean, is that?
Building inspector would.
A building inspector would look for compliance with the zoning bylaws. So you may propose a change if this doesn't work out, but the parking requirements or other requirements by that user then proposing may not be consistent with the bylaws. So that's why we have to be careful and look at each individual.
I did go to see the building inspector and he did say, oh, you have plenty of spaces for your square footage and-
For that, for what you're requesting.
Right, for what, for what I'm using, yeah.
Correct. But if it was an office building, this probably would not be compliant with the, with the regulations.
Oh, really? Oh, really?
So these are the considerations that we have to think about, so that you don't get held up after the fact when you think you can just move ahead.
Yep.
And then suddenly you find-
My next step would be what? Like the building inspector has to come out and kind of, I mean, how's his, what's the next step?
Well, once the planning board approves this, what you're requesting tonight, then you're all set.
Oh, okay. All right, just checking.
The use is approved and, and you can occupy a building for that.
Okay, all right. Okay.
And we'll treat you, you know, as well as we can next time if you, if, if you have to come back. We certainly want to work with you.
It, it is also customary, applicants will come in, talk to the land use director once Chris has worked with us longer.
Yep.
It isn't uncommon for the land use director in any community to turn to applicants and say, in my experience, here's what the board, here's what I think the board tends to look for, and here's what I think the board tends to be more flexible on.
All right.
Now, that role can't speak for the board becau- the same way I can't speak for the board because I'm one of five votes. But it, when, when our office is fully populated, which it is now, and that's awesome, that means there is an individual there to help handhold you through the process, maybe help find some, when I say corners you can cut, I don't mean negatively, but I mean places that they go, yeah, I really don't think this will be a big deal. And, and sometimes they get it wrong and the board says, hey, I need this from you too. But usually, that's, we develop a working relationship, he'll be able to give you some advice. And by the time something like this turns around, if there isn't another bylaw in place which people could coordinate and write and that would get it in front of the town, there, there would be someone with more experience to help let you know what's likely to happen. Because the land use director does some of that handholding to help the small businesses. Because we want to be small business friendly. It can be hard to be small business friendly. It's not an intent. It's, you're trying to plan for everything. And that's why we take the feedback from the community, and it's heard, but we don't have a lot of flexibility here right now by law.
So in favor of getting, you know, one of the, the two birds and a stone thing, we would request the, exclusively the retail component of our request.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Because we have to close the public hearing before we can vote, and I just want to make sure, you know, that we're comfy and that we have all the information.
I have more questions, but are we going to go through the waiver requests in the public hearing? Or are we gonna wait till afterwards? Because we can't get input after we close the hearing.
What's that?
We cannot get input after we close the hearing.
We went through the waiver requests.
Didn't approve anything.
Oh, okay. Then we might as well do it during the public hearing so we can get more input if maybe. I don't see why not.
Does the land use director have an input on that?
I would say you can go ahead and motion to approve all the waiver requests. They seem, my recommendation would be they seem reasonable and appropriate. So you can do one motion to approve all the waiver requests unless you have a specific concern or issue about any of them, and, and then you could pull that one out.
I do.
But I'd make it all one mo- one motion.
Okay.
When proof is requested.
So at, if I may, at further investigation, the, the, the site in question has really only six spaces because the other 12 spaces are on the adjacent two, two plus acre parcel.
Hmm.
So, I mean, just given these little snafu things, the waiving, the review seems really dumb on our part. They're also suggesting that they may need to have new utilities. It being a state road, they're gonna have to go through Mass Highway with the crab cut permit. The, the opening for the driveway, I don't know that we have any standards for that, but that was one of the reasons that, were you here when we went from approval to review, a review to approval?
No, that was, when I joined the board, we were always approval.
We didn't have any teeth. We didn't have any ability to, to require changes. Whereas we've got all these existing parcels of business for 50, 100 years, we've gotten some great advantageous improvements at different sites through this process. And I, I think there's nothing really wrong with that opening, but, I mean, I certainly would be concerned with there only being four, uh, six spaces on this locus property. It don't, go ahead.
I was, I was gonna ask, is there a, in, I understand that both parcels are currently co-owned, uh, you know, owned in tandem. Is there any written agreement or easement or anything about using, it wouldn't, I don't think it would have to be the easement to make parking, to meet parking needs, but is there a written agreement or something about using the parking on the other property for this property?
So my understanding that there is an easement relative to the fact that whether or not it may or may not be compliant. This is definitely a pre-existing use. It's been in this way since many, many moons, if you will.
Yeah.
The 30 years, if you will. So it's definitely been an established site. If you want to get into the knitting gritty on parking, a retail establishment does believe requires six parking spaces. So we would meet that requirement, if you will. Let me just confirm that.
If retail would require six parking spaces and then there's six parking spaces, it doesn't even matter if the others ever, the others could get turned into a big old lava pool and it wouldn't matter.
Right. So I misspoke, that would be seven spaces for retail. But like I said before, it is an established parking lot. It's been used in this fashion for, you know, almost 30 years. And there are cross easements, so there is allowable avenues for occupants of the 35 parcel, you know, encroach upon a portion of the 31 parcel. So I would argue that the parking spaces are truly there, if you will. It's not like we're skimming around something, but.
Yeah. I, so, yeah, I want to be clear. I, I, I've been to the puppet theater when it was active with my kids, so I, I've seen the space, I, I'm aware of the parking. I'm thinking, again, about we approve it, applicants 10 years later decide to sell the home, or, or just at some point, the properties come under different ownership. And now, is there still enough?
Protection to maintain those parking spaces?
Yes.
Yes.
That does exist, you're saying?
I believe there is an easement that does allow for that on the property.
Um, little worried about, I, I, I believe, just in this con- I don't want that to sound negative, but, yeah.
Yeah. You will.
While you're looking, I'm gonna turn to Matt, Mr. Allison, you looked like you had a thought or question.
I do. There is, there is mention of an exclusive use easement on the corner of the locus property, but I don't see any mention of any easement around the parking. I'm not even sure what the exclusive use easement is for.
Okay.
That's what I assumed. Yeah, thank you. Septic, yes.
I mean, I guess, I think I might personally take this stance that we, we have our parking bylaw for a reason. We gave the numbers for a reason. That said, it's, if, it, it feels a lot to me like pre-existing non-conforming then. Like, there's six parking spots there, they have used to more. It's supposed to be seven for the retail. Wait, retail, isn't retail's only by floor space, not by back sp- by storage space, correct?
By gross floor area.
By gross floor area, not by net floor area of the sales space. Okay.
Correct. So-
All right, my, I thought we did net. That's fine.
And through the chair, if you will, an alternative would be that if the property was ever changed hands, the applicant should go through the process of instituting cross easements as appropriate in order to make sure that that parking stays in perpetuity.
We can condition that. I just don't know how we enforce that down the road. Again, I'm not accusing anyone of trying to be shady. I'm just trying to make sure that all of our Ts are crossed, lowercase Js are dotted, so that we're on it. Thoughts from the board? Getting a whole lot of quiet. Well, without a lot of concrete thoughts, we can, we need to vote to approve or not approve the waivers. And that will kind of somewhat inform next steps, I think. I think I'm personally comfortable with them, but I really get Mr. Allison's point and concern as well.
Well, there's, there's an additional snafu to not granting the waiver to the review, is that they would have to continue this and have the review done.
What's that?
That would have to continue this hearing and have the review done.
Yes.
Which, um, I, I understand, you know, financial hardships and, and trying to cut, to save costs, but, I mean, our job and our duty here is, is for the whole town and the safety of pedestrians using the roads, the pedestrians and the motorists. I, I, this doesn't, this doesn't make sense to me in a few different ways. And one specifically is the common lot merger that was back in the 70s, I think, something like that. I, I think that since, and I looked it up on the GIs, they're both under the same name. So technically, this should be one law, I would think, in my, in my limited experience. Which I don't see would be a problem. It would bring you in total conformance. I mean, it's rez A outside.
Commercial districts.
Right?
Commercial district.
The locus is, but doesn't, doesn't it say that, okay, yeah, no, I guess it's not very clear, but yeah, so the whole property is. I, I just think that there's too many questions in my mind here to be confident enough that we don't need a review. It's-
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Relative to peer review and everything like that, that usually gets more into the knitting gritty on how utilities and stormwater and other aspects of site design are incorporated into a new development. This is an existing site that's been this way for 30 years and it's been working, if you will. That, and like, you know, we're not trying to cut corners or anything like that, but it is a significant financial impact upon the applicant in order to pay somebody to say, well, it's an existing site, it's been working for 30 years. We have no real comment. But obviously, we're at the discretion of the board. That's our opinion on that matter.
Well, this is, this is not just for, this is also protect them as well, because if, if that is the case, it does become merged. I mean, because the existing house on, on the two plus acre parcel has the 50 foot frontage, it's not, I think that we require 100 in rez A, don't we? Regardless, I just, I have too many questions. And so I'm, I'm personally against granting the waiver for review. There's reasons.
I think I'm in favor of granting the waiver for review because I just don't see much that really could change out of this. I, this could sound heartless. In this context, I care less about financial impact on the applicant just because I'm trying to make sure we follow the rules as my first goal. But I don't, so Matt, you're, Mr. Allison, you're saying that you think that-
Matt's right.
Yeah, I know. But so, I have to play at formality once in a while up here. There's all the through the chairs, and I just like to have meetings. I get the, so what's your concern about these might actually be one lot and not two lot? I, I don't understand.
I have numerous concerns that, you know, and none of us are engineers, none of us are licensed engineers. And, and not only to follow our rules, but also to protect the applicant because there's, what is the invalidity, the construct?
Infectious invalid.
Infectious invalidity, yes. That, I, I could see that possibly coming into play. But I don't know. I mean, you've got a house back here that's, that's all set, but then if something happens, I don't know. Again, I don't know, and I'm not qualified to, to say one way or another. I am qualified as a board member to bring the question up and, and ask it, so.
The chair. I think I end up in a place that I can't see a way that changing to retail makes any of it worse in the way it's now is working.
Oh, I agree. I totally agree with that.
I, you know, if only there was an engineer in front of us who could speak to Mr. Allison's concern. If he can, I don't, I don't know.
So obviously, you know, the, like I said earlier, when you do peer review and everything like that, they're looking at the site in itself. Does it work? Does it not work? What needs to be done? For example, if we come before this board, as we many a time, with a new site development plan, you send it out to peer review, they tell us, you know, tweak this, move this pipe here, change your drainage analysis, you know, add a little bit more landscaping, and they call it a day. But this being an existing site that's been in existence for 30 some odd years, it's an established property. People know it, as some of the board members have alluded to, you know, we've been to the property. It's, and with that being said, putting it just to peer review is not gonna do anything besides say, yeah, it's an existing site that's been there for 30 some odd years. Pre-existing non-conforming, if you want to go down that route. Like I said earlier, if there's a parking concern, you know, there, if it ever changes uses again, it was, obviously it will eventually in our lifetime. It has to come back before the board anyway. So if it does change hands again to a use that's more impactful, such as a restaurant or a carryout restaurant, or whatever it may be, at that point, there is an avenue to have additional improvements done to the property. But with it being such an innocuous use to another innocuous use relative to the grand scheme of, you know, mass av, this is a heavily commercial corridor, it's, you know, state highway. We did put notes in there for utility connections as a blanket cover statement, so that if in the future, somebody takes this plan and goes over to a, you know, a sewer installer because the pipe broke and they had to go fix it, it puts that concern out there that, that that's why it's there. That's the only reason why we have those notes, if you will. So a lot of the aspects that we're looking for right now are pretty much getting the building back onto, you know, its feet again, getting it back into use so it's not sitting there vacant.
My recommendation, and I'm not gonna put forward motions, so it's really up to other people. We could have one motion, Mr. Allison, that's the only waiver you are concerned about is the-
No.
No?
Well, it's not, it, it may be the only waiver, but it's not the only thing. I mean, to bring it up again with the parking, your, your own calculation, say 6.3, which rounds up to seven, and if there's only six on the site, so there's that. So, there's that. The waivers, it's a lot of waivers. Nine.
Because if that's the only waiver you object to, we could have a motion to approve all waivers except the peer review. And we could cite that one by number. And then we could come back and have a separate vote on the peer review to get, because I, I think you and I fall on opposite sides, I have literally no idea where the rest of the quiet board sits on this one, which is okay. But that would let us tease out that point in particular without having to go, if we agree on the others, we can just pass those as a group.
So I, I do lean to, like, to your, to your point, you know, trying to keep this as streamlined as possible, but I certainly do appreciate Mr. Allison's input, it's very insightful. But, you know, the 30 years plus in existence with no, no particular problems, the fact that it's, you know, it is local owners. And again, like, trying to keep this, this expedited does have me leaning towards, you know, the special circumstances of this particular, you know, package, you know, with the land use director's guidance.
So I'll add to the history, I'm 50 plus, and that used to be a BMX track, where the house is now, so it's been well over 50 years, is a, a space that was public, I guess.
So, again, if we're looking for, if people are looking for motions, we could have a, which one is the peer review exemption?
The first one, I think.
Which?
Section 3.7.
Section 3.7. We could have a motion to, can we, can we have one motion for everything but 3.7, the separate motion about 3.7?
Yes.
Okay, so we could have a motion, if someone's looking for it, to approve all waivers requested, except for section 3.7.
And is 3.7 the parking one?
Consultants.
Oh, no, consultant.
Yes, peer review.
Are we?
Would, this would be just about waivers that are not peer review, and then we would do peer reviews?
So, but we don't need to close the public hearing before?
No, we do not need to prove, close the public hearing for this vote.
Okay.
For actual approval or denial overall, we do, but we can do the waivers during this section.
Okay, I will second Mr. Allison.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, did you say anything?
I don't know.
Okay, cool, great. All right, great, everyone's in favor now? About the, about section 3.7, peer review. I would look for a motion to approve that waiver or to deny that waiver, and we can have a vote, or we can have further discussion if people want to speak up about it.
Motion to approve the waiver.
For section 3.7?
For section 3.7.
Okay. Moved. If there's a second.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Very good, all right. All waivers have been granted. The applicant has said they'd like it shifted to just retail. We've got this kind of potential nebulous parking issue that isn't an area, an issue now, but could be in the future if the property is can we, oh, go ahead, please, Mr.
I was just going to ask if, if the property would lend itself to adding a seventh spot? Like, could it accommodate a seventh spot at one lot?
Off the cuff, there looks like there is a small area of pavement that's still on the property, kind of towards the, further back against the road, if you will. At this general location, that can be a parking spot physically on the property. Correct me if, or correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the decision is recorded with the registered deeds with Lunenburg's permits, if I'm correct, for site plan approval.
Yes.
So that goes with the title of the land, so that if it ever does get changed, there is documentation within the chain of title saying you need to fix the parking if there is ever an issue. So there could be easement grant or required of the board, saying that if the hand, property was ever changed hands, you need to get parking square or protected, if you will.
I get hesitant about, personally, I get hesitant about that normally, because things like that get missed, but I'm also aware we're sitting here talking about seven tenths of a parking space. And I like following rules, but personally, I I get we're talking about seven tenths of a parking space. All right, any other questions for the applicant? Because if not, we can move to close the public hearing.
A motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much, we're going to talk for a couple minutes. I think personally, I'm comfy approve, however we have to word it for approving, yeah, about approving only for retail. And with the understanding that if the property changes hands, with the, with all standard conditions, with the additional condition that if the property ever changes hands, a seventh parking space must be secured on the original property. If either property changes hands, I guess. Any other discussion?
No.
If there's no discussion, we could look for a motion?
Are we motioning to approve the site plan?
That would be an acceptable motion. And I, you may move what you want. You could move to approve the site plan for a change of, sorry, to approve the change of use, it's under site plan approval, to approve the change of use for 1335 Mass Ave. We don't have standard conditions for change of use, nor do we really normally need it. So with the condition that if the property, if either 1335 or 1331 were to change ownership, then a seventh parking space must be added to 1335, to meet the town parking bylaws. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Think, was that, I don't have to, okay, cool. All right, in that case, we are all set. Thank you for your patience while we deliberate. As you can see, there are times that it gets complex through no fault of your own, through no fault of our own, through the nature of the process. I hope we could get you as close to your needs as we could. And again, if you're interested in some more flexibility in this, there are groups that are really gunning for that, and eventually the planning board may put together a bylaw about that. But if concerned citizens put together a bylaw about that and brought it to us, then you know that your specific desires are being presented formally, rather than hoping we get it. But ultimately, you know, everyone's call. Thank you so much.
I'll draft the decision for that, for the board's signature at the next meeting.
Yeah, you can bring it to, so, I don't know how it happens, but yeah, you draft the decision, we can review it at the next meeting, and then assuming, yeah, it will make any changes that might be needed, that we can sign, we usually sign just after the meeting, because the public doesn't need to watch us put pending, you know, put ink to paper. Great, going back to the agenda. It was a bigger one than I thought, but certainly an interesting discussion. Public hearings, warrant article, accessory dwelling units revisions.
Just make sure I got the right one up.
Go, go.
Okay, the Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing via Zoom and in person on Monday, September 23rd, 2024, at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass, to make alterations to the code of the Town of Lunenburg, Mass., Chapter 250 zoning. The changes are summarized as follows. amend 250-2.1 zoning definitions, terms defined, word usage, to insert a definition regarding accessory dwelling unit. amend 250-3.4 zoning establishment of districts, two dwellings on lot, to exempt accessory dwelling units. amend 250-4 zoning use regulations permitted and prohibited uses, to edit Section H, subsection 1, accessory dwelling regarding criteria applicable to accessory dwellings. Add 250-4, Section H, subsection 2, to delineate accessory dwelling units by special permit from accessory dwellings, dwelling units by right. amend 250-5.2 zoning dimensional regulations, setbacks and yards, Section E, side and rear yards, paragraphs 1 and 2, regarding accessory dwelling units in Residence A, Residence B, and outlying districts. amend 250-4.1G use table, to reflect the difference between accessory dwelling units by right and accessory dwelling unit, units by special permit. The complete text of the proposed amendments are available for public viewing at the planning office at 960 Mass Avenue, and at the town clerk's office at 17 Main Street in Lunenburg, Mass. That's a lot.
Can I tell you how glad I am? I am not the clerk right now.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, for those watching at home, because our room is now empty aside from us, and our friends over in the television booth. State changed how accessory dwellings would work. Good news. We're already by and large compliant with how they change things. There are a few, a few things we have to change, they changed a couple definitions, that means we also, like, we have to make some changes that are because, to come in line with the state directly, there's some that we have to change up because they changed a couple definitions, so we have to change our bylaws to meet their definitions. And that's for things like setbacks, because if you can build houses five feet from the property edge, congratulations, the fire department can't rescue you in some situations, and that would be unfortunate. I can tell from the public here, this is clearly a hot button, super concerning issue for them. Also, as a reminder, because I know that I'm going to hear from down the line about it, and it's true, this is a case of the state coming through saying, hey, you gotta do things, and it's nice we don't have to do much this time, but we've seen that as a pattern, right? State comes and says, change what you're doing, towns, fortunately, we're in line. We're not always that lucky. Different people have different opinions about whether or not that's appropriate, but I sure get from this end how it can be hard to have a never ending barrage of changes that we just have to bend to meet or have our bylaws destroyed. That said, initial comments from the board?
I would just like to mention that this is a phenomenal revision of an existing bylaw. This, in my opinion, is how it should be done. It should not be a blanket rewrite and then just thrown at you. And my hat is off to the building inspector and the previous interim land use director for having done it in such a, obviously, easy to read fashion.
Great, thank you. Seeing no comments from the board, I will turn for public comment. There is none in the room, but if you're watching in Zoom and want to comment, raise your hand. If you're a ghost in the room, thump twice. Dang it! Thought we paid that bill.
Mr. Chair, we received no public comment in the office on this, so we'll proceed in the meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I do think it's important to, to highlight the fact that the owner occupancy portion of the bylaw is being changed.
Yes, it is.
And then, yes, that it, you know, the fact that the, the state is coming in and taking really where authority and discretion on these type of bylaws, I think it's pretty indicative between this and the MBTA Communities Act, that they're hyper focused on developing housing units, multiple bedroom housing units in communities. And, you know, the, the residents, I applaud their being engaged, you know, when the issues are clearly affecting them, with the example of the, the water district bylaw, that their engagement is very impactful, and their, their thoughts and opinions, you know, have effect. And it's, I think it's important that they also be engaged, that all, you know, citizens be engaged in what the government is doing, they, those who we have elected to govern us, it is very important that they be aware of these type of situations, where, like you said, this is not a significant at face value change to our ADU bylaw, it actually, it actually has a big deal, like, I, I'm particularly bothered by that, the lifting of the owner occupy portion of it. You know, I'd hate to see Lunenburg become a, you know, a community where a, a large investor, a corporation purchases homes, rents the main home, rents out the ADU, and, you know, thereby making this, you know, the, the talking point of affordable housing even more out of reach for, for those looking to buy homes, because there simply is not a home for them to buy, because a, a large corporation or investor owns it. So I think that is, you know, I, I'm all in favor of somebody who has a piece of property that, or home that can accommodate an ADU, I'm all in favor of them using their property in, in the, the way that they see fit. But the other, the other aspect that was lifted was the, I believe, the, the current or soon to be former ADU bylaw for Lunenburg, Lunenburg, required that the tenant of the ADU be a family member, is that correct?
We did not require the tenant be a family member, we only required that the, that, I don't know if we required the main unit or one of the units.
Yeah, one of the, okay, that's right, that's fair, and that's fair. I, I, I liked, I have no problem with that, but the, specifically lifting the owner occupied aspect is, is, is quite troubling. And what I think is probably even more troubling to me is the fact that that's not an option for us to consider. Like, I would like to add that aspect back into the bylaw, but then we would be out of compliance, and, so it's, it's not an option, so that's very, that one issue is very, very troubling, troubling to me. And, you know, coupled with the fact that the, the state is, you know, I suppose, executing their right, but it's, I'm, I'm not familiar with any of those who we have elected to represent us, reached out to see what Lunenburg's feelings and thoughts on that, that change were.
I know our local representatives do frequently have listening sessions, but I, I can't say that I, I recall a specific reach out about this in particular, and I think, as well, you bring up a very good point, that one of the changes I didn't mention and should have, it's mandated by the state, so really, we don't get a choice in if this changes, either, even if we don't pass this bylaw change, it's still going to happen, that in Lunenburg currently owner occ- Uh, that in Lunenburg currently owner occ, um, yeah, if there's an accessory dwelling unit, the property must be owner occupied. But, um, we, the state is saying no dice on that. Yeah. Um, all right. Other comments, thoughts? Hearing nothing else? Uh, again, last call for the public to speak out. Wave that hand. Uh, I have been informed by Town Council that ghosts do not have legal right to speak at public meetings because they generally only occupy a small space, uh, that they cannot leave and thus are considered inherently private entities. That is not true. Don't quote me on that, seriously. I gotta get to that point, though. All right. So, motion to, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not hearing a lot of discussion from the board. I think we've talked about it previously and we get it. Um, so if you're interested, we could have, um, uh, a motion to recommend favorably for the warrant article accessory dwelling units revisions.
I do have a, would it be appropriate time for just a quick question?
Yes, by all means.
So why were we required to have a, a public meeting on this?
And a good, fair question. Whenever we're putting a bylaw to the town, to, to the warrant for town meeting, uh, we have to have a public hearing on that so members of the public can show up and speak their view before the board, um, potentially influencing, uh, changes we would make. Or certainly making sure the public is heard, not just at town meeting, but that they can be heard beforehand so things can be worked out if needed.
So considering it's a mandate from the state, would any comment that the public had be futile?
Um, not necessarily. Again, if we, if we do what the state says we can't, then we can't do it, even if we say we won't. Like, if we pass this bylaw and say, no, has to be owner occupied, the state's gonna say, nah-uh. However, um, there are changes in here where so, I mean, a member of the public could say, actually, I think I disagree about fire safety and you should be able to use, move, have accessory dwelling units five feet from the property line. Um, the state, the state's changes don't apply to that. So they could put that forward, that could change in the bylaw. There are changes in here that aren't strictly mandated by the state that we put in to keep it the way it's been, more or less, and, and keep things copacetic. Those are things that could be changed by the public. Regardless, even if we were only doing changes the state mandated and nothing more, we still have to have a public hearing because we're changing the bylaw. And the public has the right to say, no, we're not changing anything because we're gonna flip Beacon Hill the bird and do our own thing. The town, I mean, there can be repercussions when you do that, but the town can vote to do that, it's its own legislature. The town could also vote to say, no, we wanna throw this other thing in and make it more, or more loose, more strict, this change.
I have a question now that we have a land use director. Uh, the, so towns are allowed to be more restrictive than the state, but not less, true?
Generally speaking, yes, but you can't be inconsistent with state legislation in a case like this. So you, you, as the chair said, you couldn't restrict it to owner occupied.
I get you.
The state specifically has said by statute that, um, that doesn't, isn't allowed.
So my specific question is to the, to H1A where we had to reduce from 1,200 to 1,000 because the state said so, but our 1,200 is more restrictive than the 1,000?
Yeah, again, wherever it's inconsistent with the state legislation, then that would not be allowed.
Okay, thank you. But, and, and then to Glenn's point, um, any, any member of the citis, uh, any member of the public body could, uh, recommend an additional change that wasn't mandated by the legislation, and we could consider that as well. So it's not necessarily totally futile?
Yep, it makes sense.
Okay?
Yeah. They, they could point out, for example, that any property with an accessory dwelling unit should be labeled as such with separate numbers readily apparent and a sign on the road, the argument being that maybe the fire department wouldn't know to look for granny in the basement or something. I don't know that that would be helpful, but that's an example of what could happen. All right. If there's no other discussion, uh, I would look for a motion.
How is this, uh, motion to approve, uh, recommend, uh, warrant article regarding accessory, accessory dwelling units?
That'll work for us, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Favorably or recommend is fine.
Great.
I will second.
Oh, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bang-a-rang, that's done. Okay. We currently have nothing under, uh, additional under-board discussions, and the night is, is moving on. Uh, abutting community notices, what needs to be on our radar?
Uh, I didn't break them out into specific sub-items for this agenda, but, um, in SharePoint, I have, um, a notice of decision from the Shirley's EBA for a, uh, deck variance, a, um, notice of decision from Shirley's EBA for a self-storage facility, um, and a public hearing notice for some accessory buildings at 22 miles of lane.
Didn't we table something waiting to hear from Fitchburg about it? Uh, did we put that to a date certain, or were we just waiting to hear from Fitch? I don't remember if we had to do anything or not.
That was the, um, was it the warehouse? That was like 60% in Fitchburg and like 40% in Lunenburg or something like that?
Yeah, 260 Fallula Road. I think, I don't think it was tabled. I think it was moved through that night, unless I'm wrong.
Oh, okay. I, I thought we were waiting for, to hear from Fitch, if Fitchburg had done anything, but I could...
Yeah, no, no, I think, I think I'm wrong. Let me...
Okay.
Look back at that.
All right.
I can check on that.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that's not something we're supposed to and have to be handling tonight. Uh, and we're missing a, and we're missing the boat. I don't think it is, but, all right. While Logan gives a looksee, I will have us move forward with committee reports in the interest of trying to get out of here at a reasonable hour. Committee reports.
Next meeting for Master Plan Steering Committee is going to be October 3rd. Um, there's, I do not have any additional information at this point.
Have there been any changes on the Master Plan Steering Committee?
Oh, uh, yes. Uh, current, um, Chair, Josie Gilchrist is stepping down. Uh, there will be a regal organization at the next meeting.
Is she stepping down as a member or just as Chair?
Uh, I think she's stepping down as a member as well.
So then we'll need to reappoint someone if somebody's willing? Or we should need to ask, or mention it, that, that leaves a vacancy?
Mm-hmm. So, um, assuming our understanding is correct, and if not, then it's a moot point. But if you wanna be on the Master Plan Steering Committee, and you do, uh, I hope, please, uh, put in your Talent Bank form. You can download it off the Talent website. They don't call it a Talent Bank anymore, though, now that it's the...
It's still Talent Bank.
It is still called Talent Bank?
In my mind, it is.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
You can find it on the website, it's the Volunteer for a Committee form. Um, you can get it from the town clerk. You fill it out and tell us why you wanna be on the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Mr. Chair, uh, in retrospect, I should have clarified first, is she, was she a citizen-at-large? Do we know?
Yes, she was.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I feel very cer, not quite 100%, but real close on that one.
I, I think so too, but...
Good question. All right. Um, again, keep your eye out for that survey coming out shortly. And, uh, take it, please, get your voice heard. The master plan sets the stage for the next 10 to 20 years in town. If you, you like your town, if you hate your town, you have an opinion about what the town should be, fill out the survey. If you've done no other surveys, fill out this one. If you filled out all the other surveys, fill out this one because they keep refining what the townspeople are saying. And so the more info we have, the better. Um, our survey participation has thus far been excellent, like, really jump-up-click-your-heels-for-joy level, uh, for level of participation compared to most communities. I hope we keep that up. Open Space Committee?
Uh, we did meet, but it was a, a pretty brief meeting, mostly just taking care of approving minutes.
All right, thank you. Municipal Building Design Committee?
So, uh, again, for the second time, uh, that meeting was held at 5:30, so I was on the phone, uh, participating in that meeting while everybody was locking everybody out of the public hearing. Um, the, uh, the RFP for services, uh, is still being refined. I don't know if they, uh, I, I think they wanted to vote to approve it tonight, but I'm not sure. Uh, they were still in the revision mode, uh, when I had to leave to join this meeting. Um, but again, the RFP is for the work to be done on the Ritter Building insofar as housing the school administrative offices, I believe, and work to be done to this building, the Town Hall, um, to facilitate, uh, public space, uh, meeting space. And I don't know if that included the, the annex that's been proposed to be added to the Ritter. I, I somehow don't think it does, but, um, anyways.
Uh, who's the Chair of that committee currently?
Mr. Je, Michael Ray Jeffries.
It is Mr. Jeffries, all right. Uh, I'll admit, as a Chair of the Planning Board, I'm a, as a Chair, I'm a little frustrated because our board has a seat on that committee. Uh, you're not just there, you're there as our representative, correct? Do I understand that right?
Um, the representative from the Planning Board.
Of the...
From the Planning Board?
Yeah.
So would that, it'd be nice if the Planning Board could be at the...
Oh, oh, it, you're, okay. So it's been almost maybe over a year since we had met. And the last two meetings were kind of off the cuff, trying to get the RFP out in order to get responses because the monies that are paying for it are ARPA. So it needs to be under agreement.
Got it.
It needs to be under agreement very soon.
And in that kind of budget scenario, you're playing a little, yeah, you, you become re, you become real limited when you can schedule things in town government with all the conflicting meetings. I do hear that.
And also follow up on, on your comment is that it was, it was mentioned in the last email to schedule, uh, that he, they're looking to go back to the first and third Monday. So this, what, what we typically had been doing previous.
Okay. Great, and I, I retract some of my frustration because I, I, if you're under a time budget, your ability to schedule meetings gets real dicey. I, I do get that. Um, all right. Uh, I come, I have not reached out to the Chair of the ICOM to see if they want Planning Board on it. I said I would, I have not, I need to do that. Capital Planning Committee? We have not met since our last meeting because getting, because getting all the, uh, Town Department heads and everything aligned on how they'll be presenting their data and everything else is tricky. Uh, the, the committee is looking to have more consistent presentations, so it's easier to compare apples and orangutans, but, um, we'll get there. Economic Development Committee?
Yes, this Thursday, September 26th, uh, 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM, they're having their second annual Town of Lunenburg official meet and greet at the Low Places Ranch on 441 Goodrich Street. Not the feed store, but the, uh, the actual ranch, again, at 441 Goodrich Street. And the event is designed to bring together the local businesses, town officials, and community members in a relaxed and informal setting. But unfortunately, I don't anticipate being able to go. I have some out of, out-of-state, uh, family members in town as of Wednesday and stuff, so... If I get a chance, I'll pop over, but I don't think I'll make it.
I will be there, uh, to represent the board, and, uh, I wanna, really, I wanna be clear. If you are a town elected official, a town employee that works with businesses, if you can be there, having that contact with business owners or potential business owners, up-and-coming businesses, getting that contact, that face-to-face, not when we're sitting kind of monolithically at, on a ta, on a, you know, on a stage on high while someone's behind a podium, that's intimidating. Saying hi and chatting and getting to know someone with a quesadilla and, uh, maybe a glass of wine is real nice. It makes, it puts a friendly face on government because it's easy to forget that we're not entities, we're people. Similarly, if you're a, if you're a business owner, please come out, get that social connection. If you are a potential business owner, if you're saying, well, I've been looking at Lunenburg and I've got some, I'm starting to get these ideas together, this is your chance to come out, meet representatives from the government so the first time you talk to them isn't across a desk. Uh, last year it was great, and I hope people take advantage of it again this year. Stormwater Task Force?
Um, we had our first meeting in a little while, uh, got ourselves back on track, um, putting together what we expect to be our presentation. Um, there is a thought of having, um, a small presentation at the next town meeting, uh, just to be like, this is, this is where the town is going and we can start our advertising procedure and go from there.
Nice, thank you. Monticent Regional Planning Commission?
Uh, we have not met since our last meeting. We meet, I think, next week.
Okay. Monticent Joint Transportation Committee?
Uh, our meeting this month was canceled, as you let me know, our last meeting, Mr. Chair, so...
That was wild, I'm, I'm...
I don't get the emails, so I just kind of vibe it, go in the calendar and figure out when the meetings are.
You can get the emails, and they'll never stop.
I've tried.
Ever.
They just like you better, it's okay.
Uh, yeah, you are a far better representative. I, I'm gonna be real clear, no, no, no. You are a better representative to that group than I was, full stop. I, you wouldn't even know, you weren't here when I was representing. So you're waving your hair, I couldn't, I know.
Okay.
Uh, and it has, it fell off in this one, no big deal, but master, uh, not master, Town Manager Screening Committee? Uh, Wednesday, the 11th, we met with, uh, the, with Community Paradigm, who are the ones who submitted the, uh, winning bid for working with the town on this process. And, um, they are going to be, or I think by now have, met with, um, uh, met, met with, uh, department heads and everything else to get some of their feedback about, really, about what are the needs of the town? What is the town like? What is it looking for? To get a more well-rounded idea, um, because they then go out and represent us to applicants in a very broad way. And those who have worked with them have universally commented that they put, they put together nice, really clear info packets that explain a town well to potential applicants for Town Manager. that explain a town well to potential applicants for Town Manager. And in addition, they're going to, and they're going to meet, they probably have by now met with members of the Select Board as well. Who, yeah, that's where we are with that. We'll be meeting with them. I don't know exactly when off the top of my head, but basically to continue the process. The info will all go out, then eventually we get applicants, we screen them as the name implies. And yeah, there we go. Minutes approval. 8/26/2024.
So if you're having deja vu, it's because you, you did already approve a set of minutes for the 26th, and I talked about the procedure for taking minutes a bit with Chris after he'd started. The way it had been done prior to me getting here and everything is that the minutes for a given public hearing, like those for Three Lancaster or for 255 Sunny Hill that happened on the 26th, were broken out, and it would say, see separate minutes, and then the result of those minutes, or the result of that hearing would be included in the main minutes, but then the actual deliberations would be condensed down to that, see separate minutes, and, and I agree that that's kind of a, not a good practice for consistency and, you know, single source of truth of information. Everything that happened on this date is in this one document. So procedurally, procedurally, I don't know if this would need to get processed as a revision to those posted minutes, and if, if it does, then that can happen, but this is the version that you'd already approved with the see separate minutes replaced with the actual content therein. I will say, I don't have a side-by-side, like redlined as opposed to showing exclusively what's new ready for you, and I can, I can get that for the next meeting, if that would be preferred.
I have a question or two.
Yeah.
So the idea is that there would, do we not need to keep separate meetings for the public hearings, or? Oh, you don't?
Nope.
I always assumed we did because that's what we did here. I have no idea, I realize.
That's the, that's the running theme.
Oh. Never seen it done that way is a powerful statement for me. But I do want, I, this would be a change in how we handle minutes. I do want to turn to the board, and I don't, and I want to say, what do we think? Just independent of the, these edits, just in general, is that comfy for us?
I think it makes way more sense to have everything in one instead of breaking them out. Unless there's some reason we need to have them broken out, I don't know, like if they need to be attached to a file when it comes to.
That was what I was, that was the impression I was initially under, and when I, when I asked you about it, Chris, you seemed to think that that breaking it out in itself was kind of unusual as a, as a practice, so I would believe there's no statutory requirement for it or anything. And in terms of information storage, any, any set of minutes for a meeting that does contain a public hearing, I'll still tag it with metadata that shows that. I think that was the intended purpose of breaking them out previously, just so I can say, hey, all public hearings from 2024 at a glance, but if you're actually removing that info to do that, then it kind of replaces one problem with another.
Tag it with metadata. Ladies and gentlemen.
That's powerful.
Awesome. All right. Okay. So. Can we just, if we approve of this, can we just, do we vote to approve these and that gets rid of the old ones? Do we vote to, do we motion to revise to this version?
I think to be safe, just vote to approve as amended.
Okay.
But I don't think it's necessary. It just provides what's already been posted.
Okay. So we can look at it, and I'm not hearing any objections for this style from the board, so if we like it and we're comfy, we can, we could have a motion to approve the minutes for the 8/26/24, 24 Planning Board Meeting and all-included public hearings as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All right, does anyone want more time to review? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Super, meeting schedule. We meet at 6 o'clock here at Town Hall, unless we say otherwise, and normally that's super predictable. Our next meeting, however, is on October 28th because of the federal holiday. The meeting after that is November 25th because of the federal holiday. Another one. I mean, Veterans Day, but. All right, so just be aware that our schedule, you know, because we meet on Monday nights, federal holidays tend to hit us more, and that's going to hit us a lot right now. Friends, I hope we enjoy our time off. Public comment, is there any public left?
Nope, not on Zoom.
All right. Board comment or concerns? I did want to take a moment to let, I had the opportunity to sit down and have coffee with Adam Burney last, last Friday? Time flows. Yeah, I believe it was last Friday. We, I mean, mostly just to catch up, but we chatted about some options we, we might have and everything regarding MBTA communities, just because he has seen some things going through, I mean, guy still lives in town, so he's a citizen, he has vested interests like the rest of us. And I can put some of those together, some ideas and thoughts for our next meeting a little more concisely. But I want to point out for MBTA communities, time is ticking. And we just want to be really aware of that, especially given that you can get all the way to the AG, and then there's the secondary committee that can still say no, even once the AG has said, but this bylaw is legal. Now, you can send, but once you have an idea what you want to do, you can send that out ahead of time for semi-preapproval, for them to call out major flaws that they see. I would like us to have going forward with this. We've had some kind of thoughts that were put forward to us by MRPC. I would like us to have a couple public, public listening sessions, not bylaw crafting, not what we did with the water supply, but I would like us to have some public listening sessions over some of those suggestions in addition to our talk, just to make sure members of the public can come in and speak their piece on it. Again, I want to stress that as different than what we've done because I want to make sure we're hearing voices, but ultimately I think we'll be able to get the public's opinion. I think there'll be less need for attempts at compromise. I kind of want to put that on our radar for going forward, and just because we're going to want to move on this because if we start too late, we're going to end up under the gun. For communities that are really moving forward thoughtfully, the state is being a little kinder about deadlines. And I don't remember exactly how, I'd have to go check my notes, but it's one of those that if we're going forward and we're mostly approved, and there might need to be a little edits here or there, the state is showing some compassion, which is rare in that way. But I want to let us know that we are going to have that on our agendas upcoming because it's, clock's ticking. Any other board comment, concerns?
I think in, in, in light of what you were just saying, I think, you know, I'm not looking to create work for, you know, our, our new land use director or the, or the Chair for sure, but I know with the, the Select Board, they frequently have that slot for communications from boards. And I think particularly where we have a lot of these big issues that are kind of coming up and where, you know, we want to ensure we're not working, you know, in a, in a vacuum and that people are aware, just even beyond just our required, you know, public notices, that we give like a little blurb to the board of, you know, like, for example, highlighting exactly what you just said about listening sessions about the MBTA Communities Act or the ADU, just kind of a snapshot, and I think it could even be an email to them and they'll read it. But I, I think it would be a good source of just getting the conversation out there a little more effectively and, you know, a lot of, a lot of you hear is the, the struggles with communication among boards and among the community and citizens, and I think that would be a, a good step, you know, certainly not the cure-all, but, you know, bringing, bringing up in that other public forum the issues we're confronting.
No, thank you. I think you raise a good point. I will be in, has the Select Board let us know when they'll want us, what date they want us presenting the bylaw before the Select Board yet?
For the MBTA communities?
No, for the two warrant articles.
No.
Okay.
The submission deadline for the language, to my knowledge, was the 16th.
Yes, no, that's correct. And then what happens is the Select Board will have a representative of the, of the planning board. It's been the Chair, it's been the Land Use Director, it's been both, we'll figure. Just come forward and, because the Select Board decides if they're going to vote, basically, are they going to say to the town, we like this, or we don't, or we don't have an opinion. And so they'll have us come and kind of present quickly, here's what the warrant articles are. I think that will be real soon, and if that doesn't line up well, I can show up to another Select Board meeting anyway. It's, I'm down the road, and we can, but Glenn, I hear your point. I do think it's important, we especially, Select Board gets watched more as well, so just saying in front of more people, hey, we're going to have a listening session, here's what's going on. Look it up, share your thoughts.
And I think it's something, if you guys came up with a document and neither one of you could or wanted to go, you could put it out, one of us could go before the, before the board and kind of read it. I know we can all do it as citizens on our own, but in terms of being, you know, cohesive group and effective, that if, if a document was presented, if someone could then go read that on behalf of the board to the Select, it wouldn't fall on one person.
So if it's before, I have a chance to meet with everyone. Whatever I present would be very straightforward and factual because it'll be, hey, there's going to be a listening session about this at Timex. Here's the info we'll be discussing, like here's effectively MRPC's recommendations. If we're going deeper than that, then I would come to the board first, just to make sure I'm representing us correctly. But otherwise, no, and I agree, if we can't get there, we will have a document so someone else can. That makes sense. Great. All good? Bang-a-rang. I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Our meeting adjourned to 8:51. Thank you for joining the Lunenburg Planning Board. Come to town meeting, engage in master plan process, make your voice heard. Have a great night, everybody.